The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, everybody. I am super excited that there are this many people here tonight. It's going to be a good time. I officially call this meeting to order at 7:01. We are going to do our National Anthem and the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be performed by soloist Angelina Coote from Bristol Eastern High School.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[136.44][136.44](Applause)
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in observing a moment of silence for the following. Terrence Francis Terry Boyle, who was a school custodian at multiple schools from February 16th, 1970 to November 30th, 1990. Salvatrice Sally Elizabeth De Palma, who was a subsecretary, October 1982 to July 1989. Dominic Nick Raponi, who was a custodian and maintenance worker at Bristol Central from September 1951 to July 1992. And John Reddick, who was a truancy officer from December 1st, 1999 to June 30th, 2005. Thank you. I will now turn it over to Dr. Dieter for staff and student recognition.
If you have an agenda, you may recognize that what we're going to do is change the order of things this evening. And what we'd like to do for our student recognition first would be our excellence in statewide art and music competition. So I'm going to ask Samantha Starlee to come up to begin.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Samantha Starlee and I'm the supervisor of fine arts. Tonight, we are recognizing the achievements of our students in both art and music. We will begin with the 29th Annual Connecticut Regional Scholastic Art Awards recipients. This is the largest juried student art exhibition in the state with over 150 schools participating. The Connecticut Regional Awards were established in 1927. The national program was originated to honor the creative efforts of students in grades 7 to 12 in public, private, and parochial schools. It is now the largest and most senior program in the country. The artwork that was projected, and still is, as you entered this meeting tonight, was created by the students who won the top awards in this competition and will now be presented with a certificate for this accomplishment. Our first is Rosa Lee Are from Bristol Central, who earned the Silver Key Award. These are huge recognitions. And then our next is Taylor Sloan from Chippens Middle School, who earned the Gold Key Award.[316.64][316.64](Applause) Thank you. Okay, so in addition...[345.62][345.62](Applause) So in addition to this major art competition, we are recognizing two students who took first place in their respective grades for the artwork in the fire prevention poster contest. This artwork was also projected when you entered the room. This contest was amongst all 4th and 5th graders here in Bristol and was judged by professionals in the field of art and design and work at ESPN. These students will now be presented with a certificate for their accomplishments. Mason Small, who was our 4th grade winner from Ivy Drive, Okay. So for more than 30 years, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the Observance of Music in Our Schools Month. This is the time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools across the nation. The purpose of Music in Our Schools Month is to raise awareness of the importance of music education for all children and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. With that being said, we are now honoring our middle and high school students for their achievement in the Connecticut Music Educators Association, known as CMEA, annual Northern Regional Festival. Regional auditions are open to all Connecticut students who participate in jazz, chorus, band, or orchestra. Each audition student must practice and perform a pre-selected solo piece as well as sight-reading exercises and two scales. Students receive scores from several adjudicators and an overall cutoff score is then determined. Those who are at or above the cutoff score are selected for participation in the regional festival. These students are now going to be presented their certificate. Kayla Seacott. Bodie Miller. Devora Tressman. Chloe Van Nelson. Luke Ashworth. Miranda Muscara. Aiden Coliani. Kylie Alexis. Samantha Colette. Eva Gamble. Gabriella McClay. Vanessa Drury. Dakota Garcia. Brendan Tartarelli. Hunter Wells. Holly Cushing. Photo op. So that was our middle and high school students. Now for our high school students who made the Northern Regionals, they were then eligible to audition for the All-State Festival. This is a more demanding audition requiring additional preparation. The purpose of this audition is to select Connecticut's top high school musicians. Cutoff scores are determined and the best music students from around the state are selected. These students will spend three days in April at the Connecticut Convention Center in Hartford, learning advanced repertoire under the direction of renowned conductors from around the U.S. Two Bristol Public Schools students will now be presented an additional certificate for their accomplishment into the All-State Festival. Devora Tressman. And Luke Ashworth. Similar to the Northern Regional and All-State Festivals is the CMEA Elementary Honors Ensemble. In order for students to participate in this elite choir or band, they must be recommended by their teacher and selected from a panel of educators. These students will spend a full day at the Hartford Convention Center rehearsing with their peers from around the state. At the end of the day, they will perform a concert in front of an audience that encompasses parents, teachers, students, and renowned conductors and educators. This year, we are recognizing five students for their achievement in the honors band. They are as follows. Savannah Drury. Noah Pellerin. Avery Nye. Lila Wigle. Felipe Lozaro. Annie Vestola. Landon Hopkins. David Osnaga. Alyssa Heap. Okay. She's looking for parking. J.D. Anis Gonzalez. Dylan Field. And Tyler Holcomb. Wait, he's coming. Hold on, hold on. Okay, and now we will recognize a student who sings with Bristol Eastern Strawberry Fields. You were going to know her because she just sang our National Anthem. So Strawberry Fields is a select group of choral students who recently performed at the Weaveran Invitational Acapella Festival. During this competition, only one student is recognized for their outstanding choreography performance. This student was Angelina Coote.[924.82][924.82](Applause) Okay, and so lastly, I would like to thank all of our teachers who prepared our students and assisted them through these achievements because they cannot go without being recognized. So we have Leslie Fernandez, Brian Tricolo, Danielle Noys, Walter Lewandowski, John Abushewitz, Ken Bagley, Joy Canada, Neese Zaboa, Michael Codere, Sarah Hoy, Kyle Camerata, Andrew Most, Sharon Volk, Sarah Devenier, Chris Sipes, and Angela Lumaglio.[999.52][999.52](Applause) Thank you.
You're all welcome to stay. However, if you wish to leave, we'll allow a few minutes for you to clear out if you desire.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with the next group to be recognized. I do want to congratulate all the Arts and Music Award recipients. Quite a bit of talent in this room and we're so glad to be able to celebrate that. The next group that we're going to recognize tonight, you may have, you may know about. There was a recent article about them in the Bristol Press regarding their project and some of the work that they've been up to. So I'd like to invite them up front along with our partners from the Bristol Police Department and Bristol Youth, excuse me, Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services. So we have, joining us tonight is Raymond Peters, Leroy Rosario, and Angel Lopez. So and some of our police partners, Officer Godawala and Officer Sassu. So this project and Mrs. Erica Triani, their collective efforts resulted in the completion of six lending libraries that we're going to distribute throughout the city and local parks, three of which are on display here tonight. The last library, the one to the far left, our builders determined that the best thing to do would be to donate that. So that's going to be donated to Wade's World Foundation and that'll be raffled off later in the month on the 27th. So this is that concept of just, you know, moving it forward and paying it forward and being part of this community. This marks the fifth winter that we've pulled together a group of students to do a project. And every year, we complete a project and we make a donation to Wade's World. We work on Saturdays for a few hours, December through February. During that time, we get to know each other. We share our similarities and our differences. At the end, I can tell you that my life has been greatly enriched working with these fine gentlemen and our fine officers as well. We are better for having had this experience with each other. And we have an artifact that will be shared within this community for years to come. I do look forward to checking in with each and every one of them. I promise not to embarrass you too much when I visit you in your school. But I am going to be interested to hear about your plans moving forward. Some of you are going to be looking at post-secondary pursuits. We've had a lot of conversations about that. And, you know, lastly, I just want to say how proud I am of each of you coming together around a common theme and a project and this really generous contribution to the community that will, you know, be around for years to come. So thank you again for that. And that's really all that I have to share as we move forward. Actually, I have something else. So these are all for you as well. We have two other participants, as I said, unfortunately, couldn't join us tonight. They're both working and so they had the new choices about that. But we are happy. I'd welcome any of you, if you want to have any comments to make, you can make them now.
Photo op.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to say that this program, I enjoyed my time there and I learned a lot. I learned how to use a lot of tools that I didn't have prior experience with before. So I think that's a valuable skill that I'll be able to carry with me later in life. Like if something breaks in my house, I'll be able to fix it for you. Won't need to call anybody. But I enjoyed my time there and that's basically all I really wanted to say. I also wanted to add that we got pizza for people who didn't read the newspaper. Every week, we got pizza and I loved it. But it was a great time. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
With all the excitement of our accolades, I have failed to read the meeting norms. So I will do so now before we move on. All participants will actively participate, engage in the work of the meeting, and have equal voice and airtime. We will assume positive intentions by respecting and honoring the diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. We will cultivate trust by being honest and focusing on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. Norms will be upheld during all meetings and in all interactions outside of formal meetings. Moving along, we will approve the minutes of the February 5th regular meeting. You have all received a copy of the minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections or any abstentions? May I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We will now move on to committee reports. We had quite a busy month. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Vivert from Finance, would you like to report first?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We met on February 12th and that is a snapshot of budget as of the end of January. Over most areas of the budget, we continue to operate at, but below our budget allocation, there's really very little change in the general operating budget. The food services budget has some very good news. Our year-to-date snapshot at that time has a positive balance of $33,000. So the CEP program is working very well. We are not only financially doing well, students are eating, that sometimes would not. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. We will move on now to policy. Commissioner Giantonio, would you like to share?
So the Policy Committee meeting was held on February 26th and we covered a new policy that's going to be introduced later tonight in the agenda. And Dr. Dieter will give us a little more information on each of the policy changes that were discussed. But we have a new safety policy that we're going to discuss. There was a revision in regards to our homeless students policy. We also discussed a revision regarding chaperones and our field trips. And there was another revision regarding school construction projects and how those committees are assigned. And lastly, at my request, we did have a discussion about our current Board of Ed policies relevant to religious and/or medical exemptions to vaccination requirements to attend public school as there is some pending legislation at the state legislature. And we wanted the Board to be aware of what our current policies are in preparation for any statutory changes. And I will leave the rest of the details to Dr. Dieter later in the agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, can you report on student achievement?
Yes, we did meet on February 19th and we only discussed two items. But we spent quite a bit of time discussing those two items. The first one was the District Performance Index. And the state creates this metric that evaluates 12 different criteria. It's a way to compare school districts across the state. These criteria include evaluating our ELA performance, our math performance. It breaks it down by our high-need students, which are our students who require ELA, excuse me, English as a second language or English language services, as well as those students receiving special ed services and those students who receive free and reduced lunch assistance. So we also were evaluated based on our science performances. And there's also some non-academic metrics that are used such as physical fitness and arts access and absenteeism and the like. So the state takes those 12 criteria and creates an index. And that index is a way for us to decide how successful we're being and what we have to work on. And so we looked at our scores and we compared them to our contiguous towns around us. And we also compared them to other towns that we believe are in our peer group, other towns that have two high schools like we do and similar number of employee students and a similar number of metrics in terms of free and reduced lunch. So we looked at that quite a bit. And then the second item we talked about was teacher evaluation. The administration took us through the process they use to evaluate their teachers, whether there's a first-year teacher or a veteran teacher. And they described all the different types of evaluation that they receive. Our new teachers receive six evaluations and our veterans' teachers, not as much. And we compared ourselves and saw how are we ranking in certain criteria? And it was a very good conversation.
Thank you very much. I also just want to briefly share on behalf of Commissioner O'Brien, who is not here. Shame, shame, he has to be in Hawaii. The personnel committee did meet to start the negotiation process with bargaining units 3351 and 2267. That concludes that portion of tonight's program. And now I'm going to share my chair report.
Through the chair?
Through the chair. Operations Committee.
Oh my gosh, I forgot operations. I am so sorry, Eric. Please forgive me.
I'm going to forget.
No, never.
I know.
Go for it. I'll make you a drum roll.
Yeah, right, okay. Operations Committee met on February 26th, 2020. The items we looked at, Memorial Boulevard, Arts Magnet School, sewer line assessment, drainage line assessments being done with camera scopes. And then Phase 1 hazmat construction, hazardous materials, set to begin in late May. It's an old building, it's got a lot of problems, it's got to be dealt with. So that's underway. Bristol Central, I'm sorry, Bristol Eastern School, oil tank, which is now 30 years old, is set to be removed. Bristol Central, oil tanks, removal and replacement. The state is going to match 60% of those costs. So it's not going to hurt, the taxpayer's quite as bad. Northeast Middle School, ceiling tile replacement. We went out for a rebid. Originally, the prices came in a little too high, some changes were made. Prices came in favorable. Connecticut Acoustics was awarded that bid. The gym floor work is set to be done on Northeast Middle School over the summer of 2020. And feasibility reviews study gilt... study, however, recognize that those recommendations were made in conjunction with the enrollment study that we now show was trending slightly less than what it actually is. The Operations Committee asked me to reach out to Angela Cahill of QANM, who was formerly employed by DRA, who did the feasibility study to explore the possibility of an update to that study, similarly like we did with Malone and McBroom. I have reached out to her, and she will get back to me later this week, and I will report back to the committee then.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Commissioner Carlson? Thank you. Again, I apologize for not calling on you. It'll never happen again. Moving along, we will now have my report, and I wanted to just talk to the audience briefly on the situation surrounding our Bristol Central High School trip to Italy. Students from Bristol Central traveled to and from Fano, Italy from Thursday, February 13 through Friday, February 21 of this year. They went through Bologna Airport. As of February 24, which was the following Monday, the CDC posted the following guidance and recommendations. Only travelers returning from Italy during the past 14 days who feel sick with a fever, cough, or difficulty breathing need to stay home. I wanted to remind everybody that the Bristol Public School System follows the guidelines from the CDC and the Bristol Burlington Health Department in all areas of health. We, as a school system, are continuing to utilize the cleaning protocols that are associated with the flu season. Since the start of that season, we've instituted cleaning efforts focused on door hardware, high-traffic areas such as the cafeteria, library, classroom carpets, student and teacher desks, chairs, and other hard surfaces within the classrooms, including computer keyboards. The Bristol Public School System remains in daily contact with the Bristol Burlington Health Department to monitor any changes. I wanted to remind everybody that I am not just a commissioner here on the Board of Ed. First and foremost, I'm a parent. I actually have a daughter that attends Bristol Central. I would never support something that I wouldn't do for my own children. I understand that fears can get the best of us from time to time, especially when it comes to natures of health, and I just want the public to know that we, as the Bristol Public Schools, have the best interests of our students in mind at all times. Thank you very much. Next, we will have our student representative reports, and from Bristol Central, I'd like to call Katie Funk.
Thank you, and good evening. So, in February, Bristol Central was visited by a representative of the Sandy Hook Promise. The assembly discussed the harm in being left out and the importance in starting with a simple hello. Around the school, we now have posters displaying the three steps of the Sandy Hook Promise: See Someone Left Out, Reach Out and Help, and Start With Hello. Rounding out February was the Annual Push-Ups for Patriots. This year, the event ran from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the 28th, and students with free periods or gym classes attended during the day to get some push-ups. At 2:30, the doors were open to the public, and it was a really great event. Now, it's March, and our sports teams have been busy. For the first time, the boys' indoor track team, four-by-eight relay, won state championships and raced in the New England Championships in Boston. That same weekend, our wrestling team went to state opens after placing second in the CCCs. This Friday, the boys' swim and dive team have their CCC meet, and our basketball team played their CCC game at Buckley High School. With winter sports coming to an end, our spring teams waste no time in starting up. Boys' lacrosse and girls' softball have their preseason meeting February 27, and the girls' tennis followed the day after. Boys' tennis will meet March 9. Golf has a meeting March 16. Track held their preseason meeting on March 3, and that same day was a Stop the Bleed tourniquet training held in the library. Students were able to sign up in their advisories and receive a certification for the class. This afternoon, also, Partiput volleyball held their first practice. On Saturday, 29, Bristol Central held the Quiz Bowl. This competition was held in the auditorium, but art pieces were on display in the library to view as well. All three Bristol High Schools had students compete, and the event was considered a success. Another contest at BC is part of the writing initiative. The cellphone photo contest is where students can submit pictures they took on their phone with the caption from Mystic Owl. There are several categories, and one includes BC spirit. On March 2, Bristol Central held the annual citywide spring concert. That night, all choral groups and instrumental groups performed. The music was phenomenal, and the band even played the Jaws theme. Now, it's almost time for prom again, and if you haven't found a dress, the prom dress boutique is running once more this Saturday, March 7, for anyone who needs it. Also, there is a table selling jewelry to match your dress, and the dresses will be no more than $75. Along with the boutique, during lunch waves, there's been a raffle set up for two prom packages, female and male. And the junior and senior prom committee meets this Thursday, March 5. March 7 will be the date for the Charity Hope Fitness Challenge at HealthJaxx. Anyone can come, all you need is a $25 sponsorship, and you can enjoy classes like Zumba and Spin with Miss MD and a Charity Hope tee-shirt. This week coming up, Bristol Central is having a Spirit Week. Students will start the week off showing their best America outfits and end the week with duty for Miss Fields. That will be all. Thank you.
From Bristol Eastern, we welcome Madison Turner.
Good evening, Commissioners. Some of our events held this past February include It Starts With Hello from Sandy Hook Promise, which was on February 11. We were taught how to go up to people if we think they're lonely or need friendship. Our annual African-American reading was on February 14, and Beta put on our first talent show, which turned out to be a huge success with over 20 acts. Our musical departments went on a trip to Disney for musical workshops. Avid representatives visited to observe our avid electives and program in general. And most recent avid data regarding graduates shows that 100% of our avid graduates get accepted to four-year colleges. Last weekend, we competed against BC, St. Paul, and Lewis Mills in the Academic Bowl. It was exciting to have this comeback for our schools to participate in, because last year, we weren't able to hold this event. Also, last weekend, we held a blood drive. This was sponsored by our Student Council, and many units of life-saving blood were collected. Last Friday, National Honor Society hosted the annual dodgeball tournament that gathered nine teams, which all competed against each other with an awesome championship round at the end. Also, last week, we had our annual NHS tapping breakfast with many new additions to the club. We are currently involved in course enrollment for next school year. Teachers have made all of their recommendations, and students are now making their selections for the upcoming year, which includes some exciting new elective opportunities in the sciences and healthcare fields. In the upcoming months, we have our official induction ceremony to the National Honor Society on the 12. Spring fling is coming up on the 13, and SATs for all juniors will be held on March 25. Winter sports are almost over, except for our girls' basketball team, who won last night in tournament play, and during that game, Jordan Olet scored her 1,000th career point. They play in Windsor this Friday. Also, in wrestling, two of our wrestlers are headed to the all-new England competition this weekend. Good luck to Tommy Nichols and Mason Lishness. Our spring sports season officially kicks off next week. Heading into prom season, we plan to hold a Save a Life Tour demonstration, which works with students on good decision-making, especially when driving behind the wheel. We also have the spring musical titled Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat on the 8th and 9th of May. Thank you and have a good night.
Commissioner Carbone will now share her Superintendents Report.
Good evening. A lot to be proud of and celebrate. Our students are amazing, and thank you for reminding me all the things that happened in February, the shortest month, because it was extremely busy. First and foremost, before I begin the Superintendent's Update this evening, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to our Board of Education Commissioners for your commitment and dedication to supporting and improving our school district. As you know, or as you might know, since you're new to the Board, some of you, that March is not only Music in Our Schools Month, but it is Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of my administration and staff, we would like to show our thanks with a token of appreciation. The Tumblr in front of you is symbolic. Not only does it convey our thanks, but it also is representative of our school community and the community that you serve. As you know, our school community is comprised of families and students that speak over 29 languages, all of which are represented on the Tumblr, and happily reiterates our gratitude for your service to the Bristol community. So, thank you very much. And I could go and tell. This evening, I will update you and the community on our district priorities aligned to operational effectiveness. We have closely monitored the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Connecticut State Department of Health, and the Department of Education's coordinated prevention efforts to respond to the potential of a coronavirus spread. Our district emergency preparedness team meets weekly to ensure our plans align to the CDC regarding infectious disease incidences and follows all recommendations. Recent recommendations, including planning for telecommuting and other protocols in case of interruptions of daily life in school, are also being adhered to. As you know, if you have served on the Board before, there have been many similar situations in the past that have required similar planning and precautionary measures such as H1N1. Additionally, we monitor the Department of Health site daily for updates and guidance from the CDC on relative information regarding planning and preparedness, and will continue to coordinate with our Bristol Burlington Health District and city emergency preparedness liaisons. Our partners at the Bristol Burlington Health District, led by Marco Pelmary, have been outstanding during this time. Additionally, it is a requirement that each of our school leaders is also updating and developing their individual school plans. In the meantime, our schools continue to follow the protocols that we have instilled and started during the seasonal flu season, which include, and you may have seen this evening, that we chose not to shake hands with children, because we are maintaining our good hand hygiene by washing our hands and avoid shaking hands, as was asked of us. We also are promoting and reminding students and staff to cover their mouth and nose when they cough, sneeze into their elbow. Reminders to parents to keep their child home if they have a fever of at least 100 degrees, and that they are fever-free before returning to school for 24 hours. I think, lastly, an importance of note, that we are also following the guidance by the CDC and echoed throughout our plan to ensure that students and families or staff are not stigmatized by the community that they are part of or travel to and from as a result of the fears related to COVID-19. We will continue to communicate with our families, any and all updates, by email and phone, using our school messenger system. For ease of access and for updated information, we have added a link to the CDC on our district As you know, we update the community and the Commissioners on a monthly basis on other district priorities. In particular, this evening, we will also be highlighting our combining efforts between our learner-focused and community partnerships. As Jill mentioned earlier, during an Operations Committee in January, the Committee approved an enrollment update study by Malone and McBroom. At next month's Operations Committee, we will review the updated projections, and we'll schedule a formal presentation by our consultants from Malone and McBroom at our April Board of Ed meeting. Secondly, a joint venture by the State Department of Education and the Department of Labor created a new opportunity for school districts to provide unpaid work experience for our high school students. We are excited to partner with the City of Bristol as the first agency to engage in this partnership with us and provide our students at Bristol Prep Academy the opportunity to work maximum of 120 hours under the supervision of a worksite mentor. I think our partners from the city are here. Thank you for your leadership on this, and we're really excited. Lastly, and also exciting for our students and families, we have received confirmation that the launch of our Certified Nursing Program slated to begin next year will be further enhanced by our deepening partnership with Bristol Hospital. Our students will be able to access the simulation lab on the Bristol Hospital campus. The aim of using the simulation lab is to allow our students real-life experiences while they are learning something new or brushing up on their existing skills. The lab is as realistic as possible with the equipment, bed, furniture that they would be found in any hospital room, and the scientific simulators are designed to be lifelike as possible and fit extremely well in this realistic environment to enhance student learning. We are excited with our partners from Bristol Hospital and excited about this opportunity for our students. Additionally, a district priority is to continue to enhance the way we have family outreach and community outreach. And as we look to enhance those ways that we communicate with our community, I will be working with the expertise of Mr. Horan and his talented students in video productions at Bristol Central High School to edit and create podcasts called Six Minutes with the Super. Our podcasts will be tweeted out from our Board of Education account and posted on our webpage. The first installment of Six Minutes with the Super is due out mid-March, and will focus on our district goals and the blueprint for the next five years. Our second installment will include a conversation with Dr. Dieter and various administrators and staff, and will discuss our district-wide efforts for climate and culture. And lastly, a public service announcement. Our students in grades 3 through 8 are taught digital citizenship through their media science class. Topics include media balance and well-being, privacy and security, digital footprint and identity, cyberbullying, digital drama and hate speech, and news and media. Recently, due to events in the community, many of our administrators have spent a considerable amount of time and effort addressing any and all issues that arise due to improper use of digital forums and inappropriate behavior. I am spending time this evening to remind our viewers and our staff, students, and Commissioners of the effects of digital drama, cyberbullying, and hate speech, and remind everyone the roles they play and how individual actions, negative or positive, intentional and unintentional, can affect their peers and their broader community. We encourage our students and families to take an active role of being an upstander in order to build positive online communities, as outlined by our own curriculum and the vision of the graduate. We will continue to teach our students how to cultivate empathy, compassion, and the courage to combat negative interactions online. And some save the dates. First, I'm wearing one of them, which is, if you haven't registered for kindergarten, now is the time to register for kindergarten. Our Board of Finance, we will be presenting the Bristol Board of Education budget to the Board of Finance on March 26 at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. A reminder to those of you who have come to our, prior to our Bristol Adult Education graduation programs, on April 9, students from our Introduction to Manufacturing workforce will receive their certification and their diploma. This Friday, March 6, our younger students, our elementary students, will participate in invention convention, starting at 8:45, and if you have been asked to be a judge, we... of the effects of digital drama, cyberbullying, and hate speech, and remind everyone the roles they play and how individual actions, negative or positive, intentional and unintentional, can affect their peers and their broader community. We encourage our students and families to take an active role of being an upstander in order to build positive online communities, as outlined by our own curriculum and the vision of the graduate. We will continue to teach our students how to cultivate empathy, compassion, and the courage to combat negative interactions online. And some save the dates. First, I'm wearing one of them, which is, if you haven't registered for kindergarten, now is the time to register for kindergarten. Our Board of Finance, we will be presenting the Bristol Board of Education budget to the Board of Finance on March 26th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. A reminder to those of you who have come to our, prior to our Bristol Adult Education graduation programs, on April 9th, students from our Introduction to Manufacturing workforce will receive their certification and their diploma. This Friday, March 6th, our younger students, our elementary students, will participate in invention convention, starting at 8:45, and if you have been asked to be a judge, we invite you to join us at Southside Elementary School. And lastly, our annual middle school robotics will be held on April 8th at 4:00 p.m. at Northeast Middle School. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 8.1.A through 8.1.C? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? Motion carries. Next, we will have public comment. Mrs. Everett, is there a public comment tonight? So, before I call up our speakers, I do just want to adhere, have everybody adhere to the following procedures. Please wait to be recognized by the board chair. Proceed to the speaker's microphone. Preface your remarks by stating your name and address. Direct your comments to me. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and any comments should be made in an appropriate manner, particularly if concerning a personnel matter. Thank you. I'd first like to call up Mandy Meyer.
Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Mandy Meyer. My son is a Bristol Eastern student athlete. I'm here today with questions and concerns. No coaches have asked me to speak. At the beginning of our wrestling season, our coaches and families were told that our funds, which we had earned and raised, were no longer available to our athletes, that the kids could not have any warm-up gear, or shirts, or anything to help them show their pride or unity. Coach Lishness was told that he could have a few new singlets for some wrestlers, but not the whole team. How is a coach supposed to pick who gets something new and who doesn't? Especially when our team works together and celebrates as one. We already have wrestlers going to tournaments not matching, wearing singlets with holes in them, yet Bristol Central's entire wrestling team received new singlets, warm-up gear, shirts, and bags. My son and another wrestler were in need of a wrestling face mask after breaking their nose during wrestling events, and none were readily available. When a parent ordered them and submitted the receipt to the A.D., no reimbursement was given, no concern, no acknowledgement. When our female wrestler, one that has already been nationally recognized, needed an appropriate wrestling uniform since the Bowie singlet does not work, nothing was available, and her parents had to buy their own. I am concerned and frustrated. Our All Sports Booster Club has nearly $20,000 in their account. A vast majority of that was brought in by our wrestling team, but when they were asked to provide trophies for our tournament hosted at BE, they stated at the last meeting they shouldn't have had to pay for anything for us. We'll be asking for compensation back, yet they banked that money that we brought in. When our team traveled to Rhode Island early this season, the money for the bus came out of wrestling funds. I don't understand this. If a volleyball team or a basketball team were invited out of state event that their coaches would have made make their athletes better, would those individual teams have to cover their own costs, since they're grouped under the All Sports Booster Club? Would they have to pay? When we asked why the bus wasn't covered by the school or by All Sports, we were told that it was because we're the only team that travels out of the state. That made us feel like we were being punished for exposing our team to bigger competition in order to make us stronger. This is the only time this year we were allowed to touch money that we have raised in the past. Two Booster Club meetings ago, when we asked questions regarding our use of our money and the need of singlets, I and two other parents were verbally warned not to make waves or take any questions or concerns of the chain of command, that it would be taken out on our kids. I didn't believe it at the time, or than individual, but I do now. At the last Booster Club meeting, we were told that Mr. Casson would be attending. He did not. Myself and several other parents have tried contacting A.D., Mr. Casson, on multiple occasions, attended All Sports Booster Club meetings, and have communicated with our principal. It has gotten us nowhere. This past weekend, at the Opens and Girls Invitational in New Haven, our female wrestler took first place in her weight class. Mr. Casson walked right past her. No acknowledgement, no showing of pride of our school or any of our student athletes. He went and stood with a central steam. This has been an ongoing display of favoritism from Mr. Casson towards B.C. instead of being supportive of both schools equally. At this point, we, the wrestling parents, would like to form our own Booster Club. We already pay for our own kids' trophies and awards, minus a small stipend from the All Sports, every year, unlike any other sport. We raised monies for our tournaments, and our kids have shown both school and town pride. We understand it's easier to keep track of things when sports are grouped. When a team isn't being treated equally, it basically means we don't fit into that group. I'm hoping by speaking today and making this request for our own Booster Club, we'll shed some light on this situation and how we're being treated and perceived by our own school and our town A.D. That's it.
Thank you. Someone from Dr. Cobone's cabinet will come and talk to you, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, Laura Nichols?
Yes. Hi. Hi, how are you? 89 Deer Park Road. I do have two children at Bristol Eastern High School, both wrestlers, and the treasurer of our account, which is funneled to the Booster Club. And we're here today in hopes that we can develop our own Booster Club, so we can have more of a say of where the money goes towards. We have parents here who have wrestlers, and it's quite honestly embarrassing, when our children are out on the mat and they're wearing ripped singlets, none of them match. We go to state opens, and my two children are in the finals, and when it comes time to take pictures, the coach and the coach's son have to take their shirts off so that they can be placed on my children, so that the pictures can be taken, so they're recognized from what school they belong to. I just think that something needs to be done. We've gone through the chain of command. We're not getting a call back from Mr. Casson. We've reached out to you. We don't know what else to do. That's why we're here. It's not fair to our children. I mean, they're working really hard. These are good kids. They're good kids who should be recognized for their ability, and I just feel that they're not. They also have a problem. They feel that there is favoritism. They feel when they walk down the halls that teachers are looking at them, based on past wrestlers, which isn't right, because they're good kids. These are all good kids who do well in school, and they deserve. They deserve to be recognized, and they deserve to have singlets that match and school representation, their uniforms, or their singlets and warm-ups. So, it's important. We're speaking, there's other parents here that feel the same way. They may not come up and speak today, but they definitely feel the same way. So, we'd like to get this resolved as soon as possible.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Rosalyn Peters.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for taking the time to hear me speak. My name is Rosalyn Peters, and I wanted to share with you the most recent experience I've had, and what I can only say define as racial insensitivity in our schools. On February 19th, a group chat was made, and comments were made on racial slurs. Last year, I attended Chippendale Middle School, and in front of my mother, I was told to "get rid of my braids" because they were "considered ghetto." I'm not afraid to stand up to anyone when I know what I say is true. And other kids wanted to come, but they were too scared to because of the backlash they would receive for standing up for what they believe in. I'm not the only child at school hearing these words and experiencing these upsetting situations, walking on edge, knowing that these things are not okay. I have been told policies are in place for when these instances happen. I have been told these issues have been handled in an appropriate manner. I regret having to share with you today that not only sadly do my peers need to be taught and educated to love others, and not be inclusive to different races, religions, and beliefs, and the insensitivity, but also the district staff needs to be aware and educated. I am asking to require of such education before these events happen, and stricter punishments required to education are offered the fact, and that people need to be educated on what they say, and it's not even just the children, it's adults that are, your coworkers need to be educated on these things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that you were done with it. Yes, I am done. Sorry, that concludes public comment. Thank you for speaking out.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move item number 13.
Up to now?
Yes.
Because we will be voting on things that we need to have the report before we vote on building the items. So, I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on now to item number 13, which is building reports. First, we will have Dr. Dieter come up to discuss Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Art Magnet School update. Or Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, I'm down here. Dr. Dieter's out in the hall. I figured I'd jump in and try to bail him out. We are in the process with the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Magnet School. We just finished our review with the state. We did our design development review. We went through on the third pretty well. We didn't have any significant issues. We are now moving forward to what we're calling Phase One, which is the hazmat work and demolition work. I think Commissioner Carlson talked a little bit about that. We are moving forward with that. March 11th, we have a review at the state to go through and to approve this and allow us to go out to bid. So, that's where we're going with this. We are in the process of, Southside is through its budget analysis, and we are working with construction documents and working on that. It's currently on budget. We're replacing the mechanical systems there. We'll be doing a four-pipe system, which will allow us to have heating and cooling simultaneously, which is very good for the students, particularly in those transition months. Stafford School, I'll be talking about a motion tonight, and also with Memorial Boulevard in terms of that going up to the state for review and approval with grants approximately 60-plus percent. We also are working on the oil tanks, which Commissioner Carlson talked about, removal for one and replacement for another. So, those are all moving forward. And the ceiling tiles at Northeast Middle School have come back as successful in terms of our bid amounts, and we're in the process of organizing the scope reviews and completing the contracts with Roger Russo. I think that does about all of it. I know the next piece was to talk about the motions that we had. I should probably read the motion that we need for that. That's number 11, correct? Is that next?
That will be next, yes. That's going to be under deliberated items.
I'll wait to comment on that if need be.
Okay. All right. Dr. Dieter, was there anything that you wanted to add to that before we jump back to our deliberated items?
So, I missed most of it as I had stepped out, but I do want to just take a moment to recognize we do have several members of the Building Committee present tonight. Obviously, Mr. Wilson is a Board of Ed member. He's one of our Board of Ed reps on the Building Committee. But we have Ms. Assise, we have Mr. Smith, Mr. Matavico, I see back here, Mr. D'Amato from our construction firm. So, clearly turning out in support and hoping, looking for the continued support of the Board of Ed. We did have a lot of activity this past month. We have met with Oscar to update them and to look at the next phases of the project. So, we are in that place with this project where things are beginning to pick up and move along rather quickly. We also, I'm not sure if Mr. Callahan shared, but we did have an opportunity to visit a school down in New Haven that is running, it's a high school, but is running a theater program right down the road from Yale, and that was very enlightening with respect to the facility, the size of the facility, and the resources that are within the facility. So, we had Ms. McCabe join us for that as one of our theater experts, because we did spend a significant amount of that time in the theater focusing on the equipment that is necessary to run a theater safely with students, as well as have a resource that can be rented and accessed by the community, because they're doing all of those things within their theater program. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that would be the extent of my remarks with respect to the update.
Thank you. After having heard the building reports, we can now move on to our deliberated items and district leadership team reports. 10.1 was the request that the Board of Ed approve the final plans and cost estimates for Phase One of the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Art Magnet School. Jill, were you speaking on that?
As I said before, we are in the process of going up to the state and having our project reviewed there. And, thank you. The language of the motion is pretty specific. This will allow us to go in and have it reviewed as Phase One. At this point, it's a milestone, and then they will approve us to go out to bid. So, that's what we're working for right now. And I'd like to read this motion. It's very specific to the language that the state wants us to use. So, here I go. Motion resolved that the City of Bristol Board of Education approves the Phase One final plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding and dated 2/26/2020, and the professional cost estimated, completing in accordance with Level III of ASTM International Standards E1557, standard classification of building elements and related site work. Uniform at 2/2020 dated 2/26/2020 for the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Magnet School renovation project at the Memorial Boulevard School located on 70 Memorial Boulevard in Bristol, Connecticut, and to forward to the City Council for approval.
Is there a motion? Still moved. I'll need a second. A second. Any discussion? Through the chair. Sure. When I saw the agenda, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here and providing this information to the board. When I reviewed the agenda, when it was distributed for tonight's meeting, I had asked through the chair what this vote was about. Just for clarification to the audience and those watching, the vote to approve the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School and the first decision from the 2017 feasibility study were both votes by a different board and under different leadership. And when I read, when we asked for details about the vote tonight, we received some communication in our email on Monday, late afternoon, just before 4:00, indicating the name of the motion, what you're looking for, and I'm specifically not concerned that you guys haven't done on the project side of the House exactly what you're supposed to be doing, so please don't misinterpret this comment. But the motion that is put in front of us as new board members, new to this decision, and also brand-new board members from this past election that don't have a lot of background on the stuff that was leading up to it, says that we are to approve Phase One final plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding. But not everybody on this board, this current board, has seen those or reviewed those. We were given the opportunity to, outside of volunteering to attending, in addition with the Board of Ed liaison, the Thursday meetings, which not every member of this board can do. We do have standing operations committee meetings. I think if we had had a presentation at one of those meetings, we would have been better informed to make this motion. But the motion that's put in front of us as new board members, new to this decision, and also brand-new board members from this past election that don't have a lot of background on the stuff that was leading up to it, says that we are to approve Phase One final plans and project manuals as prepared for bidding. But not everybody on this board, this current board, has seen those or reviewed those. We were given the opportunity to, outside of volunteering to attending, in addition with the Board of Ed liaison, the Thursday meetings, which not every member of this board can do. We do have standing operations committee meetings. I think if we had had a presentation at one of those meetings, we would have been better informed to make this motion decision tonight. A link was also provided in the email with some more clarification on the motion on Monday afternoon. When we tried to access the link, it required a login, which we did not have. And I know that can be resolved and probably will be. It's the timing between when we were giving the materials late Monday afternoon, not even having them presented to us in the small operations committee meetings for members of the board to be able to ask some detailed questions to get caught up with actually what's going on with Phase One. And I'm just concerned about not having enough information, not only with Phase One, but the vote from the feasibility study was the, and I'm only using this language because that's what's written here, the do-nothing option. And since the do-nothing option was voted on almost two years ago, we have not gotten a plan about what is in store for how we're going to bring on an additional school, how we're going to pay for it, and how are we going to sustain that within our district. And I know that we're marching towards getting some additional information. We asked Dr. Carbone to go to McRoom and get the enrollment figure updates. We're also going to have a presentation on that. That's scheduled for next month. I think there's a lot of missing details for this board to be able to, I for one, comfortably say that I have reviewed these things and can vote on them in good faith and consciousness. So...
Can I speak through the chair?
Sure.
I agree with Commissioner DeAntonio. The project side, you guys do phenomenal. I'm familiar with D'Amato, I'm familiar with Shireen, I'm in Angela, I'm familiar with Downs. Tim do a great job. The problem I have, I am that new member. I'm not comfortable going forward with something that I personally have no idea what was done, how it was done. And my biggest concern from day one when I got here was how we're going to finance a new school. And I cannot get an answer for that. How we're going to, what we're going to close, what we're going to open, how we're going to pay for it. I mean, I feel like we're buying a house and then we'll figure out how we're going to pay for it after. And I just don't think that's, I don't think that's right. So I personally would like to make a motion that we table this vote until at least April, and we have a serious discussion at our next operations meeting as to how we are going to pay for this school. Again, I appreciate everybody's hard work on the project side. I've been in construction my whole life. I'm familiar with everything. It's just the financial side that I have a real issue with. And again, I can't, in good conscience, like Kristen said, put my name on something if I have no idea that how we're going to pay for it. And I don't want to get, when the school comes online and now here we are, myself and I don't know anybody else, but I don't want to be holding the bag when we figure out, you know, oh, our taxes are going to go up now because of this. So I just would like to table this, a motion, I would like to make a motion to table this until we have a serious discussion at the next operations meeting, and then we'll readdress it in our April meeting.
Through the chair.
Okay, sure.
We currently have a motion on the table concerning the approval of it. We are one member short of this full board. Perhaps the person who made the motion to approve would withdraw the motion.
I need the motion to approve, but through the chair I have a question for the gentleman before I withdraw my motion.
Okay, just one second. Are you finished with your remarks, Commissioner Carlson, before I call on the chairman?
No, I just want to say this has been, you know, this has been a very difficult project for the entire Boulevard School issue has been a rather difficult issue for the city. I had to deal with on the City Council, and it's very divisive and it splits people up considerably. I don't, personally, I think that giving it an additional month and full board to approve, this is what we need.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Please let me address. Commissioner Robert, now?
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I don't know which one of you can answer this question. Would there be any negative ramifications if this was to wait a month?
Yes, there could be potential ramifications to the project. First and foremost, it would set the completion timeline back, and it would delay the documents going out to bid. It could also jeopardize the grant, which would require a new application of the grant. So, you know, I do feel compelled to provide some additional information, which I did share with, at the request of the chair, with members of the board, which was that this is a new requirement of Oscar. And the intent is that the Board of Ed has an opportunity to understand and to view the information that has been vetted through the committee. The committee did approve the documents. That approval happened Thursday night in a public meeting. And the information from there is always available, as we've discussed, in the office, facilities office upstairs for review. I can certainly appreciate the enormity of the documents and how they change and how this project has evolved. We do know, as, you know, members have identified, that the previous feasibility and enrollment study, we have changes in enrollment, we have changes that, you know, will impact the district. We're doing our, we're making our very best effort to consider all of those variables when we move forward and make a decision. So I don't want anybody here to think that, you know, we take this lightly and not that was suggested here. But we are making our best decisions based on the information that we have, and we will continue to do so. And then lastly, with respect to funding, the funding issue has been addressed through the Office of School Construction and Grants Review, who has provided us a commitment of the total project cost is $63 million, approximately 54, excuse me, the breakdown is approximately 60% share between the state and the city. And the city has gone out to bond the balance. So the funding issue has been resolved and addressed.
Through the chair.
Of course.
On numerous occasions, we have been the recipients of a number of questions from the public around class size. Since the onset and opening of 2K8, our enrollment has been larger than the projection. I certainly cannot speak to the history of the process of the Memorial Boulevard project, but I certainly can speak to the why an additional school that has state-of-the-art facilities is of the utmost importance to the education of our students. As you earlier voted on two projects, because one of our middle schools, built in 1960, still has the same ceiling tiles and floor. The worry and concern of the funding by delaying the project would be an additional burden to the city and the taxpayer. And I can appreciate the newness of the Board of Education members who have inherited a project that you were not part of from the onset. But I would be remiss if I did not express additional developments coming into town mean additional students, mean I need additional classrooms. And the current footprint, we know, in the two areas, South Side Elementary School and West Bristol, are already significantly burdened by enrollment. I would ask folks to reconsider their decision.
Through the chair, I have another question.
Of course.
When did you know that it was a requirement to get this vote Phase One from this board?
We typically put together at the beginning of the project a checklist. So we do this for every single project. So it typically comes through right after it's approved by the Building Committee to the board. I think that maybe there's, we can, at this point, there are new people here who have not been involved in this, and I can understand that maybe, to your point, that we bring up these things at the operations committee meeting specifically, what the motions are going to be when they are. I think that's a good idea. I don't see any problem with that at all. It's not past practice, but it makes sense. And that might be to allow us to meet and talk about this before it comes down the pike to you here at the meeting. So I think that's a reasonable request. I would, we can look into that and clean that up a little bit and make that work better for particularly new members. And this process for the approval for the state is arduous. It's very difficult. We have letters. Kate was signing probably 15 letters the other day. All talk about natural daylight and air quality and all the things that we have to do. So sometimes we get rushing forward. But I think to your point, and I respect that, the fact that you really need to see information a little earlier. And I've said this to the operation committee meeting, I think you were there last week, that our door is open, the facility's door is always open. The documents are there. I have people come in. John Smith comes in all the time. We review documents and go through stuff, look at specifications, talk about the construction schedule. So that's kind of what we like to do downstairs. And I would say that I think that's something we should incorporate into how we move forward. As far as, you know, this motion, what we're really doing right now is just saying we're moving to the next step. We're going to the state and we're going to ask for the grant. We have not gone out to bid. We have not committed to this portion of the project. Until we go out to bid, get the bids back, and then we will award, we'll have to award the contract to the low bidder. So this is not sort of the first, this is the first bite at the apple. We'll get that again as we move forward. But I certainly understand your concerns about getting information earlier. I think that's a very good idea, and I think, you know, even if, obviously, everybody's invited to any of the Building Committee meetings that they want to come to. But if we have milestone decisions to make at a committee meeting, we might want to just flag everybody and let them know we're going to be talking about these, the specific Phase One, or we're going to be talking about the completion of Phase Two and the construction documents. So I think if we communicate better, that might help us.
I appreciate the response. I just have a quick follow-up. I really need the people in the room to understand that we know that this is a city project. In a committee meeting, after one of our full Board of Ed meetings, when I was asking some details about the city side of the project at a full Board of Ed meeting, I was told afterwards that that's a city project. Why are you questioning those things? The build of the building is a city project. I think this board, if you want to get us to have motions that we feel comfortable with approving, then we should feel open to ask those questions. This is also a volunteer board who meets, pretty much every one of these members meet almost every Wednesday, every night. It is an unpaid volunteer board. We realize that you have open, public meetings on Thursdays. Not everybody can attend those from this board in addition to the board meetings. We already have established board meetings and a committee where some of these items could have been brought up, given us a heads up. I know that you're under timing and deadlines, but you have to understand the position of the board members on this board, the new board, who are also dealing with decisions from previous leadership and a previous board, are being put in a very bad position as well. We're the ones who have to account to the public when that school opened, what the redistricting impacts are going to be. I was a parent in this district with a school-aged child the last time redistricting was done, and it was not fun. So we know that there are some hard things coming up in the future with regards to these decisions. And I hope you can appreciate that the board is engaged, at least. And we want to know more information and how this is going to roll out for our community. We're the ones that have to deal with the public and the administration and everything else for the decisions that the board is going to make. And us blindly just saying, yep, we approve it, makes us culpable for those decisions as well. And I think in all fairness, if you knew that you had to get this motion approval, you have a project manager. I don't think, and please clarify if I'm wrong, if our entire board decided to show up at one of those Thursday meetings, isn't that an illegal Board of Ed meeting? I mean, we're, the way that the Building Committee was set up was one liaison from the Board of Ed. We didn't hear from that liaison that this motion was coming up and we should get the materials and take a look at it. I mean, it's really, you know, the fact that you're up against timing pressures shouldn't mean that we make an uninformed decision. And I appreciate the hardships. I really do. I hope you can appreciate the parents that volunteer, the parents and community members that volunteers on this board, the position you're putting them in as well.
Through the chair.
Of course.
So is there anything at this point that can be said to people who are feeling not confident? Are there questions that could be asked today so that we don't jeopardize state funding? And we can acknowledge that planning should have happened and that maybe in the future we can handle it differently? I think they took full responsibility in the sense that they're saying that they're open to coming to operations meetings in the future to prevent this from happening again. But at this point, the situation we're in where the superintendent is asking us to reconsider and the people on the Building Committee and Finance Committee are saying that we're putting ourselves in a situation to be set back and we need these seats. Can we use this time here while we're here to ask the questions to try to satisfy members of the board who aren't satisfied?
Through the chair. I don't think the issue is the building being financed to be built. The issue is the turnkey. Once that building is finished, Downs is out, Punchestor done, D'Amato's gone, we own that building, right? So the issue isn't, what you're saying, the money. It's the issue is, how are we going to pay the operation cost for a school that we can't bring kids out of district to help subsidize that cost? So the question that this board has, and yes, I can appreciate that in the future you guys are going to come to our meetings. I get it, great. But as a, you know, as four of the nine of us are brand-new to this board with this project in full swing, who dropped the ball on saying, we should probably get these new board members up to speed before Monday afternoon, oh, by the way, you're going to vote on this Wednesday? That's terrible. I mean, I got to be honest. I just can't wrap my head around the fact that you call us on a Monday afternoon and tell us we're going to vote on a Wednesday for something I have no idea. And then you, and again, I appreciate Tim, you saying, hey, we're going to come to operations meeting in the future. Okay, great. But to answer your question, unless somebody in this room can tell me how we're going to finance this building, once we own it, there's really nothing these gentlemen can offer us. And that's my, that's my hole that I've been asking since the beginning of November.
Through the chair. At the last operations committee, we purposely presented what was written in the 2017 feasibility. Not only did we present it within the feasibility study, which has been on the website for, since 2017, there are costs associated with each of the facilities. There are also items within each of the facilities that need to be addressed. In reference to the specific question about how will we be operating a school district in 2022, 2023, or 2023, 2024, the next steps need to happen. The first step was that, based on my administration, we asked for an enrollment study to be redone because we're already two percentage points over. Then after we receive the information about our enrollment study, we would then engage, as we talked about at the operations committee under Eric's leadership, to update the feasibility study so that we understand the properties that we own. To project the costs of running this district in two years or three years from now would not only be negligent of me, it would be irresponsible. And I can appreciate that there are many new members that do not have the same amount of background about the building project. I also am very wary... I also am very wary of explaining or trying to package the amount of information that has transpired at the Building Committee in short verse of information. In reference to this motion, and Mr. Callahan, please correct me if I'm wrong, is this, in addition, a step that is being asked for by the Office of School Construction? And had this step been used in prior building projects?
Yes, it has. Yes, of course it has. This is the same procedure we've been using for a long time with the state. I've worked with the state for many years. But I would say that the procedure right now is really a motion for us to continue forward with the project. That's all it does right now. We are not committing to, we are going in and we're getting our approval for that. But again, the bids will not be, will have to be executed, so there's still many more steps to go. This is one leg in the process where the state says to us, you have met the criteria for your drawings are accurate, your information is accurate, your documents are together, your estimates work, and we're going to allow you to proceed to the next phase of this and go out to bid. With the project now, we have a deadline of May 31st for, for breaking ground. So, if we're not done by May 31st, and Costa Diamantis has told us this, you guys need to be breaking ground in May. The schedule right now, when we get approval in, in March 11th, will allow us to proceed and be breaking ground at those dates. We'll be coming back here again with other motions that deal with the other phases of the project. So, we'll be, we'll be having to go back and look at that. So, we're still, this portion of the project is only 6.7 total project cost for this section of the project. The total project cost is $63 million. It gets us in the queue for the money that has already been approved. And by the way, that's, it's approximately $37 million that we're talking about here, that if we're not done in time, we can jeopardize not, not getting that funding. And we're very tight right now with the schedule. And, and I'll tell you right now, DAS is on our back to get this going, and they want to see the shovels and the ground. So, that's the kind of thing we've been dealing with, with right now. But this is past practice, this is what we've done, and this is, this is how we've gone ahead.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
I'm going to let Pete Kelly go first.
Okay. You can go.
Okay. Mayor Zappu Sessu is here, and she's been involved with this project forever. She might be able to lend some clarification, if you're prepared to do that? And if it would be allowable?
Just let me get my questions in first.
Sure, just hang on one second. Eric, yes?
I'll get my questions in first.
Of course, go ahead.
Okay, through the chair. As board members, we got to, you know, we're always concerned about our school budget and the effects on the taxpayer. In this particular case, we're looking at an effect on the taxpayer if we go forward to this project or we stop this project. If this project stops here, there's going to be, there's going to be a hit on the taxes because this city owns this building, and it is an expensive building to maintain. To try to create another project out of it by abandoning a school, I think would hurt the taxpayers far more. I think that anything else that we do, you know, we've got a line, we've got funds coming from the state to cover 60% of this cost. The city's still, the city taxpayers are still going to be paying for the part of the costs, cost of the school operations. But in this case, you know, that horse is out of the barn. I don't think we can, we can change anything now, and I think we should move forward with approval of this initial work.
Through the chair. Other question?
Of course.
My previous tenure on the board, we also had asked since the feasibility study decision vote, the do-nothing option, we had requested continuous updates on what the vision is going to be for the district. So, tonight is not the first night that we asked for that information. That information has been asked for, for the last year and a half, and I was here when Commissioner Cagiano, previous commissioner, relentlessly tried to get updates on the vision, on the rollout, on the plan, even if it was a preliminary one, and the board never got it. We were told we were going to get it, but we still didn't get it. And it's a little disheartening to me to hear, well, now we'll tell you, or now we'll come to the operations meeting, when we have been asking for a while for the plan. I know these decisions are going to be hard going forward. I get it. I just am a little disappointed that we're getting pushed into a corner. Are you telling me for absolute certain that you will lose the grant because you can't ask for a month's extension on a meeting? There is no extensions, no requests by parties, attorneys, building things?
That's what we've been told. We have it from documented from our OSCGR meetings. We have, you know, that, that has all been clearly defined to us. And they rolled out the letter last week and said, here's when your clock started. It was two years ago, May 31st. We applied for the grant, and they said, your clock stops on May 31st, 2020. You better break ground. That, that's what they said to us. Now, I honestly think if we, it would be great if we needed more time, but they're really difficult about the rules. Now, if we come in and we don't have this motion on the 11th, the project goes on hold. The motion is, they go through, they have a checklist. We're going to be spending probably four hours over there with the, with the plan reviewers. We had a pre-meeting on the 3rd, and they said, here's the information we need to see. And this motion is one of the most important things that we need to do, including the motion from the, from the Building Committee too, which we've already done. So, it, it's something that they, they've mentioned, we've been in those meetings, Mike's been in those meetings too. So, it's a hard and fast deadline, you know, at this, at this point in time.
The Building Committee did vet this motion and this proposal in quite a bit of depth in last month's meeting, last week's meeting. And it was unanimous of the committee members that we should proceed forward. The ramifications of us not taking this vote this evening are significant. We've already spent about, almost close to $1,005,000 in money towards this project already. We have contracts with the architect, and we have a contract with a construction manager already. So, if we violate those contracts and someone thinks that we can stop this project, there'll be significant litigation over, over those two issues, I believe. The way the City of Bristol's charter reads is, we create this Building Committee, and it's constituted by members of the public, it's constituted by professionals, it's constituted by members of the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, and they're charged with making the decisions for this city project. This board, prior to you coming on, voted 100% for this project. The Board of Finance voted 100% for this project, and the City Council voted 100% for this project. And I've been involved a little while in this town, and I've never seen a project, ever, that had 100% endorsement from all three bodies. When we tried to build the 2K8 schools, we went round and round and round trying to fight us, find a site location because we could not get agreement of those three bodies. So, this city, I'm not sure where the division comes from that this project is so divisive because those three bodies unanimously supported it. You know, now, this is just one of the steps that we must take. We have been working for the last year and a half trying to get to this point where we have design documents and estimates and all the programmatic changes that we had to make to get to this point. And now, one of the hurdles we have to get is get the approval of the Board of Education. I think, and you're going to approve the next item, it's the same thing. You're going to approve a roof project at Stafford. You don't know anything about a roof project, but you're going to approve it anyway because that's what we do at the Board of Education. We approve these projects. We don't have a lot of detailed information about them. We're not roofers, we're not engineers, we're not architects, but we have already made this decision to go forward. If we choose to back out of this project now, Bristol will not get another dime from the state of Connecticut for years and years to come until this memory goes away, and this memory will be long-seated. If you remember, those of you that are old enough will remember, we had money earmarked for the Center Mall improvement many years ago. And we walked away because we couldn't get a group of people in this city to go with us around a plan. And we walked away from $42 million. Well, we'd be walking away from much more than the money that dedicated to this project if we walk away now. This is extremely important. It reflects on Bristol and whether we can do business in the City of Bristol.
Through the chair. One last request. I appreciate your cooperativeness with being willing to provide the board, as we asked in this meeting, with the additional information and collaborating more in our committee meetings so that we can be as informed. I'm also going to ask our fellow chairman, Wilson, as our liaison, who has been involved with the project, to also keep the rest of the board informed of things that might be coming up that need our attention in enough time for those that are interested and want the details because you, the previous board, which I was not, I think just yourself and Commissioner Beber, not for the initial decision, for the, to approve. And then there was an election, and a lot of those members that voted for that project are not on this board anymore. Elections have consequences. And if we want an informed board, which I do believe was one of the things, very first things that Superintendent Carbone wanted, was an educated and informed board. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
I am asking those that are going to come before us to make sure that we are comfortable with the information that we're going to be asked about. And just because past behavior, you know, stamped approval, even though they don't know how to replace a roof, you have different board members now. It's quite condescending to be told that we shouldn't care about these things. I'm summarizing ad-libbing, that wasn't your exact quote. We're asking for the information. We certainly don't want to cause any additional burden, but it is our big decisions going forward. And I would appreciate it if all the board members were treated because of their, let me go back to the norms. I don't know if we picked one. Glad we don't do that. Focus on the work and not the people was one of them. You know, we're asking for the information. I feel disappointed that we got backed into a corner. If you're in agreement with providing the extra information, which I think we already heard that, but I think as commissioners, we have to agree that there are commissioners on this board that would like to know in advance of being asked to vote on something, some details of that. And so, they understand it. I don't think that's a lot to ask.
Through the chair. I totally understand the new board members' concerns, absolutely. And I also recognize the fact that going forward, these gentlemen have said they're going to meet those concerns. That being said, I agree with the superintendent, I agree with Commissioner Wilson. I think it would be devastating to this, not just to our school district, but to the city if this was to be stopped right now. So, that being said, unless somebody else has something else to say, I'm going to renew my motion.
I'm going to second it again. Okay, so, just to me.
I have a request that we do a roll call vote.
I just want to make sure that I'm following proper procedures, and as a point of order, I so far have just had a first to table this. I don't have a second, so do we?
Well, I was asked to reconsider, and I'm not taking my motion off the table now, I'm not.
Yeah, the motion is on the table. The, the request to table it was not seconded.
I think somebody cut it off before we could get to that.
Okay, so, the motion before us would be, our recommended motion is approved.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns before we take a vote? Do any of the new commissioners feel relieved in the fact that moving forward, presentations will be made more clear and information will be given to us in a more timely fashion?
Chair. Yeah, I'm okay with that. Again, if there's hard costs associated with a school, we should know what those are by now. That's all I'm asking for. We know how many, we know how many units are in the school, we know how many teachers we're going to need, we know how many staff we're going to need, we know how many, this is all I've been asking for. What is our operating cost for this somewhat? What are our hard costs for this new school?
Through the chair.
I can appreciate that we're going to, this is a big burden if we, if we delay this project, but it's going to be even a bigger burden down the road when the taxpayers are paying for a school that we maybe not be able to afford. But again, other than that, you-
I think Dr. Carbone was going to address that.
Once again, I will reiterate, I can't think of this building, and I don't think you can either or should as a standalone addition to this district. It is an inter-district magnet school, which will mean that it will pull from our middle grades and our high school. In addition to that, as you, many of you have reminded me, we have overcrowding in some of our schools. This will not be we're adding a school. This will be us presenting to you and giving you information around how this district should best utilize the space that it has. And there will be, to Commissioner Gianantonio's point, tough decisions. And we will communicate with the public, and parents will be involved.
Anything else on this side of the table? No more questions, comments, or concerns? This side of the table? Questions, comments, concerns? No? Okay, so then, we are ready to vote on the motion that was read.
Starting on your far right.
I'm sorry?
Starting on your far right.
Yes, so, Susan, we're-
Are we calling for a roll call vote on it?
Roll call vote.
Sure.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gianantonio?
Yes.
Commissioner Poms?
Yes.
Commissioner Skalanka?
I'm sorry, what do we?
We're voting on the original motion to approve for Oscar to move forward.
Oh, no.
Commissioner Beber?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Upstate.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Jube?
Yes.
Roof 6 to, 6 to 1, one extension.
Thank you very much. Now, we're moving on to 10-2. Request of the Board of Ed approval of the final plans and cost estimates for Stafford Elementary School.
Okay. Again, we're doing the same thing with Stafford School. We're going into the state to get approval, get the grant. This is going to be moving a little bit slower, but we're getting all this, this done so that we can, we can move through and get approval. So, the motion here is for the Stafford roof replacement and mechanical upgrades and the PV panels. And I'll read the motion. Motion resolved, the City of Bristol, Board of Education approves the final plans and project manuals as prepared for the bidding and dated 2/12/2020, and the professional cost estimate completed in accordance with the Level 3 of ASTM International Standard E1557, standard classification of building elements and related site burden, uniform at 2/2020, dated 2/12/20, for the Stafford School roof replacement project to include solar panels, mechanical upgrades located on 212 Louisiana Ave in Bristol, Connecticut, and to forward to City Council for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? Probably a little late for discussion after the vote, but, okay. Probably a little late for discussion after the vote, but, okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Callahan.
You're welcome.
Moving on to agenda number 11, policy revisions. Dr. Dieter is going to fill us in on the policies discussed at this month's meeting.
Okay, the first policy that we have for consideration tonight is Policy 3516. This is a new policy referred to as Safe and Secure Facilities, Equipment, and Grounds. The purpose of this policy is to codify safety and security requirements of the Connecticut State Department of Education and to align with Connecticut General statutes. Many of the items within this policy are things we are already doing. It pulls them from various other policies and brings them into one uniform policy. Things to notice within this policy are the links back to school safety and climate, reference to the Connecticut State Department's Ed requirements with regard to various activities in your school to ensure safety, climate surveys, other types of activities that would be done with our local first responders, et cetera, as well as reference back to the National Incident Management Systems Training and other guiding practices. We do believe that if we adopt this policy, it may prove favorable for future grant applications around school safety. So with that, I would ask for your consideration of Policy 3516.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
The next policy for your consideration is Policy 5118. This policy is in regards to homeless students. This is a revision, it's an update to, and it is a required policy, I should add. This policy details our practices, our protocols, and our expectations for the enrollment, continuing enrollment or new enrollment of students that are considered homeless and would have protection under the McKinney Ventil Law, which is the federal legislation that guides our practices. What to notice in this particular policy revision is a change in the language that, that is very specific about the district's obligations in the event that there is, the district takes the position that the student is not eligible for McKinney Ventil Accommodation, and the steps that the district must take as well as the person that is seeking that level of accommodation. So in summary, that is the pertinent revisions to Policy 5118 that I would ask for your consideration in a protection.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving right along.
Next policy for our consideration tonight is Policy 6153 regarding field trips. We, this language was not, this language is being proposed by Bristol Board of Education administrators and had, was discussed with the policy committee, the subcommittee, as we identified a couple of areas that we felt we needed to be very explicit about with regard to chaperones. So the language that we are looking to add, first under the subheading of Policy 6153, under responsibilities of chaperones, we would like to include language that all candidates for chaperone not currently employed by the Board of Education must submit a photo ID to be processed through the criminal database system that we have at each one of our schools. In addition, under Rules for Chaperones, which is 6153 Exhibit D, if you're looking at policy, the exhibits typically follow the posted policy. The rules for field trip chaperones, we are proposing that you strike the language that says chaperones will be asked to present identification, and that we add a language that says all candidates for chaperone not currently employed by the Board of Ed must submit the ID to be processed through the criminal database system, so the same language as the, the policy itself. And then we stipulate for any overnight trips that persons other than staff members, Board of Ed staff members serving as, as chaperones on overnight field trips, the previous language said may, we are proposing that the language now read that persons will be required to submit to a background and security check, which is a, a more deep background check that we would perform here through our Office of Talent Management. Just to make sure there's nothing else. I believe that is all of the language for Policy 6153. We did have a discussion, I feel obligated and a responsibility to share, that we did discuss the language of chaperones being 21 years of age, and we, we are seeking some clarification regarding whether or not, in practice, regarding whether or not consideration should be made to change that language to 18. And as a, as a subcommittee, we did say that we would be looking at that at the next policy meeting. With that, I am going to ask for your consideration to approve the changes, or, excuse me, the revisions that I've just discussed.
Move to approve Policy 6153 Field Trips.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, of course, sorry, discussion, yes. Commissioner Weber?
Dr. Dieter, you said that at the next policy meeting, the age is going to be discussed. If we're voting on this now, and a decision is made to change it to 18, we'll just be bringing it back?
We didn't change it.
Oh, you didn't change it? No. Oh, okay, I misunderstood, my apologies.
Yes. So due to the manner in which, due to the timing of the issue, we, the, the subcommittee had already gone through and so...
I understand.
But we got it, we're going to revisit it.
Thank you, my apologies.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the last policy for consideration this evening is 7100. This is a policy regarding construction, and this policy codifies the requirements for the establishment of the building committee and the representation of the building committee members. We did have a language that was provided to us from CAE. After careful review, we decided that we were going to surgically pull some very limited language out of what was provided so that we would be in compliance with Connecticut General Statute 10 dash 283. And specifically, what we are proposing to add is that a requirement that at least one member of the building committee has construction knowledge and experience. So that, I believe, was the extent of the revision to the existing policy.
Any discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dieter. Okay, seeing as there is no new business before the board, we will move on to liaison and information reports. I'm going to ask if any of our liaisons from the middle schools or K8s have anything that they would like to share. I will start to my left. Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Pons? Commissioner Weber?
No, I don't have a middle school K, or, thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Commissioner Giantonio?
I do have a K3 update for West Bristol School. Last week, West Bristol School participated in jump rope for the heart. Listen to this, as of today, students and faculty have generously raised over $10,000.
Nice.
Our eighth grade community service project is currently underway with a goal of collecting 20,000 bottles and cans, and they're halfway to their goal. These funds will be donated to the Bristol Veterans Association. And finally, the PTO hosted a Valentine's Dance and a Bingo Night, and both were well-attended by many students and families.
Excellent. Commissioner Carlson? Commissioner Wodowski?
I have a report.
Awesome.
So Leah McCabe, Dean of Northeast Middle School, and I got together this week, and we had a nice visit, didn't we? So we went on a nice tour of the school, got to see the gym floor and the greenhouse grant project area that's going to be completed in partnership with Public Works. The PTO hosted a Fun Friday last week that was heavily attended, and it was a lot of fun. Dean McCabe let me know about the Tiger Cup that they've been doing since January. It's modeled after Harry Potter, and it's a competition among the five teams. Points are awarded for various successes such as positive office referrals and Spirit Day participation, and there are plans to celebrate the winning team in June. The sixth grade will be reading a book together as a grade. It's called Faith and Destiny, and the author will be visiting in April. And then lastly, Dean McCabe shared with me some of the strategies that are fulfilling Dr. Carbone's mission of needing to know every kid by name, strength, and need, and it was awesome.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Skolinka?
I don't have a middle school, but I do want to make, make mention to something that was left out of our high school reports. Ella Nichols is that, was one of the wrestlers we were talking about. I'll just kind of read quickly. Basically, she's a, she's a really good, great wrestler for Eastern, and she earned All-American honors finishing seventh in the National High School Coaches Association National Wrestling Tournament in Virginia Beach on March 31st, and she was also accepted to the Pan American Team by finishing second in the U.S. Cadet Women's National in Irving, Texas. So I just want to make sure that that gets mentioned, that that's a great accomplishment for a female wrestler. Which, and it greatly deserves me, what's going on. But, and also, it wasn't mentioned, but Donovan Klingon got his 1,000th point as a sophomore in high school. I want to make sure that doesn't go unnoticed as well. He's doing a good thing for his mom, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, do you have anything you'd like to share with the board?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman Dube?
Yes.
I, I, this isn't a K through eight liaison report, but through our discussions when we were clarifying how we were bringing up liaison reports, it was agreed that I could continue to bring up the monthly SEPTO report because they need one.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
So I'll go through that.
Sure.
The liaison report for the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO will be conducting their next meeting on Tuesday, March 10th at 6:30. They'll be at the Bristol Public Library, and they will be conducting a Mach PPT and ESY information session. All are welcome to join in for the Mach PPT. It's an interactive and fun look at the different perspectives at a PPT meeting. The night will also include a brief presentation on extended school year services, and this will include a question and answer session. Unfortunately, we don't have childcare for this meeting this month, but there will be light refreshments served. And this event, as a reminder, is free and open to all that are interested. You do not need to be a member to attend. The Greater Bristol SEPTO welcomes all. And that could be found on their Facebook page, and you can, if you're interested, just click that you're interested on the event so that they had an approximate headcount. Thank you.
Does any other commissioner have any other information they would like to share? I would love a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you.